Dear Heavenly Father, we come this evening and we're going to ask you to please be in our minds and on our hearts so that the leaders of this city will make the Christian decisions that would be beneficial to all citizens of Alexandria. Dear Lord, we also want to thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings you have bestowed on our families and our friends. And again, Lord, please guide our minds, guide the minds of our leaders, that they may represent the citizens of Alexandria. In my Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. President.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Feltzer.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Madam President, here it is.
The approval of the minutes taken from the regular meeting held on October 21st. I need a motion and a second.
Move.
Moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, what section of the written minutes would you like to make a comment on? If it's not in the written minutes, there will not be any discussions or comments only. If you have any questions pertaining to any item on the agenda, please contact the administration before or after the meeting. Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Yes. Executive session to be held pursuant to RS 4217A2 on the following. A. To consider an executive section to receive a report and recommendation from the city attorney regarding settling the dispute in the matter at the Ninth Judiciary District Court entitled Terry Holmes versus City of Alexandria, docket number 273418, and other matters related thereto.
I need a motion.
Move.
And a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lord, seconded by Councilman Johnson to go into executive session. Roll call, please.
Ms. Valar.
Yes.
Mr. Lawredine.
Yes.
Ms. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Feltzer.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Madam President, it's you.
Okay. Article 3 of Chapter 2, Section 2-46 through 2-50 of the Alexandria Code of Ordinance relative to City Council District repealing ordinance number 372024 and reacting to the council district boundaries and description in ordinance number 153-2022 relative to redistricting and reapportioning City Council District 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 as shown on the map titled "City of Alexandria Council District Prepared by the Office of City Engineers to Provide for Effectiveness and Other Matters With Respect thereto." I need a motion.
Move.
Second, please. Motion by Councilman Lawredine, seconded by Councilman Johnson to open a public hearing. At this time, we will have public comments. The public hearing is only here to make comments from the citizens and to hear the comments from the citizens. Each person has three minutes to make their comments. Do we have anyone that would like to make any comments?
No, I don't. I know that you signed, but you don't have to sign up for public hearing.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My comments about this situation is I have seen a lot of interviews, people talking. It's my understanding that the 2024 map was done according to the census. And right now, I feel that those maps should be reinstated, reenacted, whatever you want to call it. The maps that Elizabeth Myers Felter did in 2022 was politically motivated. Now, she said that the maps that this right here is politically motivated. So it wasn't politically motivated when the council let you do it. You represented, you went to the Rapids Area Planning Committee to do what you did. So what you did was you, a lot of people were affected. Some people went to the precincts that they were voting for all alone. When you did the gerrymandering, those people had to find out when they went to the precinct that they were not there to vote in that precinct. They had to find what precinct. So yeah, you did it for political motivation to get your seat. You also said in your interview that you talked to some of the council members and they just didn't seem to understand it. But you did it, and yes, you said in the same breath, you voted for it. So you told on yourself. So I feel that the council from the present that did this while you were here, they should be held accountable for doing it. I think the president at that time, I may be mistaken, was Jim Valard. The Rapids Parish Planning Committee should have contacted the rest, even though it wasn't up to them to do it. It was for Ms. Felter to talk to her other counterparts.
Okay.
But you didn't. And several other council members that didn't know or understand it.
Ms. Bell, can I interrupt you just for a little bit?
May I reclaim my time when you do that?
Yes, ma'am, you sure can. We're going to talk about the redistricting. We're not going to, you know, it's freedom of speech.
Yes.
But we're going to stay on the redistricting.
That is, this is all part of the redistricting.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
But what? It says, "Public hearing concerning amending."
Okay.
And reenacting.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's what I'm saying on that, it should be reenacted.
Yes, ma'am.
It never should have been done in the first place.
Yes, ma'am.
So how much time do I have left?
You have 27 seconds.
That'll work. So, in my opinion, as a citizen and ratepayer, that those maps on 2024 should be reenacted. And I yield back to Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Good afternoon, or good evening, that is.
Good evening.
Everybody knows who I am. So, I got a question. According to...
It's comments only.
Comment, okay, okay. I'll put it in a comment. Let me say, "according to," I have to say that part. So according to your homeroom charter, right? It says, "The only reason why we should do any type of redistricting," I want you guys to understand, "according to the homeroom charter." Section 2-03A and C of the Alexandria Homeroom Charter provides two provisions for changes in district boundaries. Number one, in the event of annexation of new areas into the city and following each federal decennial census, those are the only time you're supposed to do any type of redistricting when it comes to your own home rule charter. And I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
Hello, everybody. My name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White Jr. I live at 3638 10th Street in Alexandria. My phone number is area code 318-446-6934. Last time I was at this meeting, I got beat down.
Mr. White.
Now, we're going to start out right now. Hold up, Madam President.
No.
I'm going to get to my point.
Hold up.
See, you're not going to beat me up, but Jim Valard ordered that.
Mr. White.
But I'm going to continue with my...
Hold on, Mr. White.
Stop, stop. Hold on, hold on. Hold on.
Mr. White.
Yes, ma'am.
You're going to speak on redistricting?
That's what I'm going to speak on, if you let me speak on.
But hold on. You have not brought up beat down and I don't know how...
Well...
So no, sir, no, sir. So let's not talk about that.
But see, that's the point.
Let's talk about the red...
That's what makes people mad.
That's what, but you're here to discuss this public hearing is for the redistricting, not about your beat down, but the redistricting.
Well, that's the point. That was about the redistricting. Anyway, and I hope some of y'all from the news media, I would love to talk to y'all after the meeting. But on this, why are we, just like the young lady was saying, if we're changing the rules about this redistricting and all like that, and it's in the home rule charter that you can't change, you know, but one time? So y'all can do whatever you want to at any time? Or we can't ask a question about that?
This is your comments, Mr. White.
Okay. So you can do whatever you want to. It doesn't matter, you know, just like she was talking about Lizzie Felt. So now we're going to have these districts, I guess the planning commission got... Sorry, I didn't mean to do that, Jay. But that's the only thing, people won't question, there's a lot of things happening in this town. I guess that's why I'm going to have to run for mayor, at-large councilman, something, you know, because nobody's getting no questions answered. And like I said, did y'all violate the charter? Or you don't know?
You guys got to answer your questions.
Yeah, but tonight, tonight, we just hear from the people.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all.
Like, the purpose of this hearing is just to hear from the people. We're not going to comment, we're excluded from doing so, but we want to get feedback from the people on how this issue affects them, so.
Do we have anyone else?
Talk. Please talk.
Be afraid to talk.
Mr. John, you come.
All right, Darren, can we, see if we can make this thing show back up, brother? Prepare just a little bit, I was joking with O'Day before the meeting, sorry, Matt Johns, Rapids Area Planning Commission. I was joking with O'Day before the meeting, like, it worked out really well, it's convenient. I took the presentation from last year and just switched the language for current proposed because it's the exact opposite of what we looked at in May of last year. So I'll give you what changes by the numbers, this will be for the citizens to know and for you guys as well. You guys probably already know most of this, anyway. After the 2020 census, we go through a process of redistricting for not only Rapids Parish, but the school board and all municipalities within the parish that have council districts. And with that, we also reevaluate precincts. In that process for the city, we finished doing the first pass of reapportionment in 2022. You guys adopted the boundaries that you're looking at possibly reenacting tonight. And then last, actually about 2023, we were asked to look at a few potential amendments to propose to you guys, presented that last May, you adopted those. So what I'm showing you today are going to be the changes back from what we did last year to go back to the 2022 maps. The districts are laid out on the left, 2, 3, and 4, the only three districts affected, so 1 and 5, we didn't mess with any of your stuff there. The precincts are listed on the side, it shows you where it's proposed to go and where it is now. So again, when we say where it is now, that's per the ordinance as adopted last year. So C40 is in District 2. It's proposed, I'm sorry, currently District 2 has C40, it's going to get C9, that'll be the trade. District 3 will trade C9 for C18, and District 4 will trade C18 for C40. That doesn't make a ton of sense unless you're looking at a map, so I've got that as well. One of the things that we're supposed to look at when we're helping you guys in the legal process of this is making sure that it stands up constitutionally. One of the ways we do that is look at the demographic data, so we take the total population of the City of Alexandria divided evenly amongst all of the districts and say, all right, if that's the case, then based on 45,275, I think is the number from the 2020 census, you should have about 9,055 people. It doesn't matter demographics, age, none of that stuff matters in that first assessment. With that, the rules that were given from the Supreme Court state that there is an allowance for a 10% differential. The really loose interpretation of that means you can be 10% above or 10% below 9,055 in your population. That gives you a 20% range. So the more stringent interpretation of that rule means that you should only have 10% between the highest and the lowest of your others, which could be 5 and 5, or it could be 7 and 3. So the 2022 maps that we presented fit that more stringent definition. The ones that were passed last year fits the looser definition, so that's the trade-off there. So currently, as it stands, District 2 is going to be 2.32% above that 9,055 mark. District 3 ends up at 7.11% below, and District 4 ends up 4.48% above.
All right, Mr. Johns, stop right there. What, explain, I guess, those numbers, break those out so people can understand what you're saying.
Oh, absolutely, okay. So again, the target to be in line with the Supreme Court regulations that we're giving in implementing this is that you want to try to have 9,055 people per district based on the census from 2020. So if it's that plus 2.32, it means that it's 2.32% above 9,055. We're allowed to go above and below that number because it's going to be really hard to hit it on the head because the precincts are laid out oddly. So the idea is that when you finish doing that spread, that the highest and the lowest, somebody below the 9,055 and somebody above the 9,055, if you're meeting the strictest interpretation of that rule, that's 10% or less of a range between those two. So this is 2.32% above 9,055. District 3 is 7.11% below 9,055. So if you look at just Districts 3 and 4, you'll see that the range exceeded the most stringent interpretation of that rule at 11%, right? So 11 and 1/2. So it matches, if you take the liberal interpretation of the rule, which we did for some of the jurisdictions that we did this process for. So if you go from what was done last year, which is listed as current, and go to the proposed, you'll see that it's a much tighter fit. Now, what this doesn't show you is District 1 and 2, or 1 and 5. 5 had the largest differential from the mean, the 9,055. 5 had the largest differential from the mean, or the 9,055, and it was a 7.65% deviation below. And that was intentional, because the western side of Alexandria is the fastest growing. So even though it is within the 10% range from the highest to lowest, District 5, with the next census, is gonna be closer to being in line with whatever the next number is going to be. So with the growth going out there, that's, that's the reason.
So stop, so stop right there. So it looks like with the proposed numbers, it seems like 2, 3, and 4 will equally populate.
Yes, sir, pretty close.
Less than 1% from the 9, 9, 9 that you mentioned.
Yes, sir.
I'm not supposed to speak? Okay, aight, man, aight, bro. All right, go ahead.
Well, you guys, just shout them out, I'll try to answer as best I can. I, I wanna try to make it clear. So the first part of that was population, solely population, not thinking about demographics. When we start talking about demographics, the rule is you don't wanna flip a majority district to minority district, meaning if you've got a majority black district, you don't wanna flip that. So the numbers here, they're, it's like minuscule. The biggest one is like a 6% jump, if you're looking in District, sorry, District 3 between the current, can I move this down for a second?
Please, that's fine.
Uh, for white and black, but again, it doesn't flip it. So the fact that it doesn't flip it one way or the other means that it's not, not a big enough deal for it to trigger us having to say we need to do something different. So the, the demographic data doesn't play as big of a factor as the population. And that's, that's what the Supreme Court tells us we gotta use, anyway. That being said, I've got a map that breaks down the difference between the two. I don't know how well you're gonna be able to see it out there, but the one on the right is what was revised, it's, yeah. I can zoom in, let me zoom in for the area. So the district, or the precincts in question are 18, C18, C9, and C40. And it's not gonna load for me, of course. I'm so sorry about that. Yep, I'm not gonna fight it. And those fall, uh, I can use this now. Those all fall within this little area right here. Here's C18, here's C40, here's C9. So it was a three-way swap before, going this way. Now it's gonna be a three-way swap going back. And, uh, this just gives you the, the data that we were working with, showing you that we pulled it, pulled the census data from where we were supposed to.
Mister John, I'd like for the public to know something. These, the two different maps that are up, they're identical maps. One has the Rapids Parish precinct shown, and that's the one on the right. The one on the left does not have the precinct numbers. Uh, when you put the precinct numbers, it strokes some of the streets, so it's easier to demonstrate precincts on one map, and the other map is without the precincts being shown, so that you can find your neighborhood. But they're the same maps.
Yeah, what, what I have on the computer, if I can get it to work, should show you both of them side by side. But again, it, it really is just those three precincts. So there were pros and cons to both. So when we presented this last May, uh, the pros were that it was unsplitting precincts. Uh, splitting precincts is a no-no. It's not the end of the world, it's not constitutionally gonna get you in trouble, but it's something that we tried to avoid technically. Uh, we couldn't do that to make the population fit as tight as we tried to the first time in 2022. What changed last year was putting those precincts back together. It did make the precincts whole, so there was a pro on that side. It did just knock us out of the strictest interpretation of that, that population range. Here we go.
Can I ask a question? We're, we're not allowed to ask questions, can I ask a question?
You can ask, no question.
Okay, what was the purpose of you doing that, since it wasn't a big deal? Why did you do it?
We were requested by the City of Alexandria. Uh, that's, I'm not gonna get into politics, so. Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question also.
Can you remove that, uh?
Yeah, yeah, again, sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
Your numbers was 9,052.
9,055, I believe, but yes, ma'am, somewhere in that range.
Okay, because I... 9,082 was the number that was given to me, so...
Yeah.
How did you get your numbers?
Yes, ma'am, ours came directly from the census. Um, so the census, when they get their data, it is, I'll be frank, it's, it's garbage sometimes, but it's what we have to work with. So the City of Alexandria may have had some annexations that happened that the census is not taking account for. And those, again, it's, it's a miniscule difference between the two, but our, we have to use the, what's technically provided to us from the census, which was, uh, 45 to 75, I believe, and we had to split that. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and, and we could, if we had those additional population figures and knew where they belonged and which census track, we could add those in and go through the same process again. But you're looking at, you know, 20-something people. It's not gonna, not gonna be a huge difference since far as how it affects the averages overall. I, I, not disagree, I'm just saying, overall.
So, Matt, is that a practice? I mean, whether the city or whoever come in and asks you to do something, is that a practice to just go in and do it without checking with the courts or anybody, the state is meeting?
So the legalities of it are evaluated, from our standpoint, on what we're given as the rules from the Supreme Court. The city staff and city attorneys have to review it for how it fits with their charter and all the other legalities of it. Once it is done and voted on, it is still submitted to the Secretary of State and to, uh, some, I forget the judicial side of it, but it is sent for a, a review at that level as well.
So maps for 2024 was already signed and approved, period? I mean, 24.
Right, so they can be adopted and then sent down for verification by the, by whatever the judicial side of it is. Trey, do you remember the name of it? I'm sorry.
Well, they changed it.
Okay.
Today, since August...
You don't need pre-clearance.
This year, we have to get, we have to submit the proposals to the registrar of voters of Rapids Parish for her to read, and also to the clerk of court of Rapids Parish, because that's the office that actually conducts the elections. They have to review and, and send a written letter. This is across the state, just city, that was it. Since August 1st, this year, every redistricting done locally, the registrar of voters and, and clerk of court has to look at it before it's adopted to assure the governing bodies...
But Mister Guest, Mister Guest, if I may, I think your question was more steered towards the Department of Justice reviewing it.
Since, in the last nine years, about nine years ago, the United States Department of Justice no longer conducts what's called a Section 5 review.
So the 2022 maps should have been going through that same process, is that right?
I believe so, same as, same as both times, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so when we're reviewing it for this, again, with all the rules that we have in place, our goal is to try to get it into posture to where, when we present it to you guys, we say, "This is the most defensible." Like, anybody can try to sue and go get it changed, no matter what, if they just don't like it. And the courts, depending on how it's reviewed, they could look at it and say, "This is completely wrong," even if we got it as close to the letter of the law as we thought, that, that it should be. So it, our goal is to try to get it as, as defensible as possible for you guys, and that's, that's what we have for, um...
So you got it close... You got it close enough to... Take some of the people out of District 3 and overload District 4, so that a council person, house could be in that district, so that person could run.
I, I think maybe Miss Ernst still has it. And, and the 2022 maps are the ones where we felt like we had it as tight as we could get it. In 2024, it did meet the looser definition, so, which is a 10%. It did, they both met, they both met the definition. One was a strict interpretation of that definition, the other was a looser interpretation. And we had done both for multiple jurisdictions at the will of whatever the governing jurisdiction was.
Okay, go ahead, with your, with your presentation.
I, I think that's it, unless you have any questions, sorry.
I, I have a question. What's splitting a precinct?
Splitting a precinct, all right, so, uh, let's take this one for a second. Uh, say you've got C18 and, and you've got Jackson Street runs through the middle of it. If, if for whatever reason, the population number on the north side of Jackson Street made more sense to, to push it to District 1, for instance, this is not what we're doing, you could split that precinct in order to make it work. What's frustrating about that, and the reason we tried to avoid that, is all the people in the same precinct then wouldn't be able to vote for the same thing, right? So right now, at C18, you'd be able to vote for, everybody in precinct C18 would vote for District, somebody in District 3. But if it was split right there, everybody on the north side of Jackson Street, even though they were still in District, precinct C18, they wouldn't be allowed to vote for District 3, they'd have to vote for District 1. So that's the reason we tried to avoid that. And, and in full disclosure, uh, 2020 was my first time at the helm trying to get through this process. We started with the Rapids Parish Police Jury, which I thought was the right move. I will tell you now, I know that it is not. In the future, whenever we do that... Well, so, whenever we do the police jury, that's when we can make the adjustments to the precincts, 'cause that's a parish situation. But, because we did that without considering the effects that it was gonna have when we got into the smaller geographical municipalities like City of Alexandria, City of Pambal, uh, it kinda painted us into a corner, so where we were kinda stuck with the precincts as we had them. Had I been considering, uh, the precincts for the City of Alexandria from the start, we would have been able to amend where some of those precinct boundaries lot, were, were laid out, so it would better fit, you know, you could move these things around a little bit easier. So that was, that's on me, so that's nobody else's fault but mine.
Thank you, Mister John.
Madam President, Matt, six, Mister John, with, on December 2nd, will you come back with that presentation, when we can ask questions?
Yes, sir.
'Cause I don't wanna get in trouble.
Love to.
Yeah.
I'm already in trouble, it's like...
I wanna thank all the public for making the comments. Um, that is what we're here for, to listen at your concerns. Um, thank you for that. Thank you, Mister Matt, for your presentation. Um, we have another meeting that will be December the 6th.
6th.
2nd, I'm sorry, December the 2nd. And, um, you can come back to that public meeting in, as well.
I move to close.
Motion second to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman LeLoyd to close the public hearing. We need a motion to, um, open back. A second.
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 Excuse me, no. You need a motion, second, to close the public hearing.
I did say I want...
No, we need to vote on it.
Now, we need to go ahead and vote on it. Public comments, discussion, and follow-up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Public comments, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion, carry.
H, consent calendar. Number 1, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a low B submitted for treated wood pose. Number 2, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a low B submitted for a minimum of 1 Rilo refuse truck, 25 cubic yard capacity. Number 3, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a low B submitted for a minimum of 1 gravel truck for the sanitation department. Number 4, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a low B submitted for a minimum of 1 shuttle truck for the sanitation department. Number 5, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a low B submitted for Jackson Street gas main replacement for the gas department. Um, we had bid ordinance today, and we did not receive any bids, and the administration is requesting that this item be removed and re-advertised at a later date. We don't need a motion. Number 6, no, sir, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a low B submitted for Mazzani Court Sports. Number 7, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city attorney to sell and, and compromise the dispute in the matter at the Nigier District Court entitled Terry Holmes versus City of Alexandria docket, number 273418, and other matters related thereto. Number 8, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal received from Utiliserv LLC for water distribution flushing program. Number 9, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to award the engine overhaul service contract for DG Honda units 5, 6, 7, and 8 to Molder Service Ugo Stamp Inc. as backup service providers.
Need a motion, please?
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Any items to committee?
Aye, resolution number 10. Resolution confirm Daniel T. Smith as Director of Planning.
Motion, please.
Move.
Motion by Councilmember Lloyd, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, this was open on September the, October 24th, however, and the qualifications claims that you have to have, uh, things that are not listed in Mister Daniel's resume, which is very articulate. And his BS is in psychology and Asian studies. I read all of the letters that was forward for him. Uh, the lady, Miss Harrison, New Orleans, the Gold Wings by Mister Dara, City of Alexandria by City Councilman Goins, I don't see who's here. And then you had the Mister Goins, I'm sorry, Mister Matt Jones, and then you had the Red River Delta. The things that was required for this is not privy in his resume, although he did go to Rice, Princeton, and Georgetown. But what the... What they call for is not in his, anywhere in his resolution, anywhere in his resumes. My question is, uh, does he qualify for this? It's unquali, it's a, uh, does he qualify for this? I don't see the eight years of experience. It says certain things that gives me a problem, that if we're gonna start deviating from the requirements, uh, I'll give them to you, bachelor's degree with an accredited college or university in public administration, urban planning, architect, or design, or related fields.
He has that.
Eight years... Eight years of progressive, responsible management experience in planning, development, and zoning preferred. Any equivalent combination or training, education, experience that provides the required skills, knowledge, and, and abilities. I heard you just say he has that. In Mister Goins' letter, he states that he helped with the Hodges Project. I spoke to several people down in that area, and they're not happy with, that was part of his work, Hodges Stock Project. It's still vacant on the front. They're not happy with the apartments. And my thing is that, I know his, uh, it's unclassified, he's only gonna be there until the election of 26th. But, uh, I don't think, and I have nothing personal against Mister Daniel Smith, but my thing is the qualifications aren't there for him to do this. Now, this was open on 9/24/25, and according to my clerk's stamp then, closure is October 24th, 2025. So... Did we not have enough people, enough people to qualify for this mayor or whomever going to speak on this behalf?
So I'll just start with the qualifications you listed. He meets all of them and exceeds every area, and I think everybody in the city who's worked with Daniel knows that. Daniel, uh, received at the same time a Georgetown University Law Degree, graduating magna cum laude, which is the top 10% of his class at Georgetown. At the same time he received his Georgetown Law Degree, he completed a Princeton University Public Affairs Masters, which is one of the listings that you listed, that he meets, uh, in which case he was also a top student, and that was in domestic policy specialization. Uh, that was from Princeton. Uh, he also went to Rice University in Houston, which is one of the best universities in the country. Daniel is a, is a absolutely top intellect in terms of just being able to complete those things. A Georgetown Law Degree, uh, magna cum laude, which is the highest honors with the hot, with, well, undersumable, but second highest honors. He's also was a city attorney from January 23 to present here. His duties were specifically to advise the city division on the planning division, zoning and community development. People have seen him present here on those issues over and over. People have seen him present here on those issues over and over. He also was in New Orleans in the city attorney's office from November 2015 through January of 2023, where he also was in permits, the board of zoning and adjustments, and all of those code enforcement, all of the matters that would qualify him here. If you add up those years of service to here, before I get to his other stint in Alexandria, he more than meets the permissible, not required but preferred, eight years. He was with the Bureau of Governmental Research in New Orleans, he was at Lisco and Lewis, he was at Jones Walker, he was, he did a stint, interestingly, and for the Navajo Nation on DNA, People's Legal Services as a summer clerk. And he was with the City of Alexandria as grant writer and program manager, where he mostly specialized in planning and large-scale projects like Spark, of which he was a major part as a young man in that time of his life, from 2007 to 2011, responsible directly for about $3 billion in grants. He administered other planning, economic development, and housing and transportation programs. I would submit that not many people are more qualified than Daniel Smith for this role, and I would commend him for the council's approval.
Okay, upon those accolades, Mayor, urban planning, that's something that's really needed in this city. That's one reason, to me, that we aren't growing and moving forward because we don't want a bad, ruined situation where we have a small area that's growing and the other side of town that's not growing. I just want to need somebody that's going to be in there, that's going to be able to do urban planning, give us a good idea where this city is going overall. I'm Councilmember Lord, so I go from down Third Street all the way out to the Coliseum. So I speak to people who all over the city have their concerns of where this city is moving and not moving. In certain areas, it's not moving. Down Lower Theory, there's a food desert. So, Mr. Smith, I don't know what your urban situation will be doing to help these people in that area. I know we're moving west, but we have more to be concerned with just than moving one direction. Sir, I read your education, very esteemed universities. I've read all the letters that they gave you that wrote, was wrote for you, but none of them are saying that you supervise people, you could do all of this, what is being required per the charter recommendation that was issued out by the City of Alexandria Utilities Department.
It's not in the charter, sir. Planning is not, planning is not in the charter.
Let me retract charter. What they requested that was required for you. So, your time, Mr. Daniel. Can you tell me what are your plans with the, just say for?
I got a question. I got a question. Would he be a department head?
He's a division head.
A division head. That'd be a division head. Okay. All right, all right, all right.
So, planning is not in, in the charter. Planning was something that came about after the charter was adopted, the standard set for a planning director.
I understand that, but my question was to Mr. Smith. As the director, if you get this, what are your plans to move this city forward overall, sir?
Well, thank you, councilmen and all the council. First, I want to say, you know, my appreciation to Mayor Roy for having faith in me to make this appointment. And it is a big responsibility, and it's one I'm really excited about. And of course, it would require a lot of work and dedication, but that's one of the greatest divisions in this entire city, from engineering, planning and zoning, community development. We have an excellent staff and they've worked very hard, and I believe I've earned their trust over the last few years by providing them day in and day out with advice. More specifically to what you're asking, I'm really appreciative of Mayor Roy's plans. He's come out recently with an executive order on housing. He's talked about the reignite program, which would sort of be Spark 2.0 in a sense, which was something that, as Mayor Roy noted, as a young man, really, I cut my teeth here in the City of Alexandria, where I grew up, working on those programs back before I went to law school. Of course, to be planning director for the entire city, just as your councilman for the entire city. It's, I've had the pleasure of years, those four years before going to school and coming back now for the last three years, of getting to know again every part of this town, from places in District 2 that I think a lot of people don't even know exist, you know, tucked behind Stirk Street, and places off of Third Street and down in Samtown and Woodside. This is, this is a great city. It has great bones, so to speak. And yeah, we do have a lot of awesome opportunities that are happening in certain parts of town, but we also need to redouble our efforts in other places. And again, I have to speak to the executive orders Mayor Roy's put out recently, giving the planning department specific guidance on the direction he wants them to go. And I'm very familiar with those and prepared to hit the ground running and implementing and helping him implement his vision for going forward, not just for the next year, of course, but for the next, hopefully, beyond that.
So, Mr. Smith, you said you've been through Samtown and Woodside. What would, what would be your vision for Samtown and Woodside?
Well, one of the things, and I don't want to get ahead of the executive order, but we're probably going to look more closely at using adjudicated lots perhaps to incentivize development. There's ideas about changing some of the zoning restrictions, maybe with smaller lots to allow people to, to come in with more affordable housing. These are some things that the planning department is, is starting to generate in response to the executive order, which I believe they'll have the draft of it to the mayor this week, a report. It's about a 70-page report with all kinds of ideas and also goes through, frankly, some of the things that they've tried in the last few years that haven't worked and try to identify what those issues are, whether it's with developers, or affordability, or restrictions in the community development program. I think it's, they were very excited to, to work on it. I helped them sort of with some of the legal support. And with your blessing, I'd like to help them by leading the department.
I got a comment. Who's the director of planning now? Do we have one?
We don't have, well.
This is new.
So Melinda's acting, just as interim, but she's a classified employee, so she can't be director unless she gives that up.
I, I read your resume and I was impressed with your resume. And I spoke to one of the, someone earlier, and someone gave me a chance on, on a job one time that I, I did not have a background on. So I've read the resume, and I think since I've been here for the last two and a half years possibly, we haven't ever scrutinized. Maybe we should. But planning, I don't think, from what I read, that you cannot do the job. And I was impressed with your resume. I mean, we started from scratch really, so this is something brand new. We started from scratch, so we got to start somewhere. My next question is, how many people applied?
Yeah. How many people applied?
I'd have to ask Lisa. I just want to make sure people understand before you get, so the unclassified staff is, has always been in this subject. Those are like your cabinet secretaries. That's, that's a mayoral appointment, and council's job in that situation is if someone doesn't qualify, or someone thinks that this person can't serve in that, that's when the advice and consent of the council comes in. But it isn't like a classified position where it, I went to Mr. Smith and when we saw all the applicants, that Mr. Smith is clear who I would want to do it. I was, he didn't immediately say, yes, he's been the deputy chief city attorney, so Jonathan's top right-hand person. We had to discuss internally that, like, do we want to give up his advice in planning on the legal side to run it? But Daniel's first love was not necessarily the law, it was public policy, and doing these things was Spark.
But Mayor, you have to, you have to admit, his experience is in law. And, you know, man, you have a very impressive resume. I mean, I, I want to first get that out there, but from what I'm seeing, I don't see much that deals with planning.
Yeah, so if we go back to all the planning directors before him, we could start with their experience in planning.
Has he even, even worked in the planning?
Nobody, nobody has ever been urban planner that sat in the job.
Okay. Has he ever worked in planning?
Oh, yeah. Before going to law school, I was here for four years, and largely what I did was working, running the Brownfields program, for example.
In New Orleans?
No, no, here in the City of Alexandria.
Okay, before you went to law school?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
There's no one more on the ground in planning than Melinda than he is for the whole of planning. Brownsfield's grants, all of those things, he intimately understands that.
I, I don't doubt that he doesn't understand it. I mean, he's, he's a very bright young man. I mean, Georgetown Law ain't no cakewalk. Top, top 10%, I commend you, young man.
A lot of work.
You know, your mayor was, was, had that distinction.
I don't know how young, how, how young, well, I don't know. You're acting like you're a kid. He's not a kid.
But I guess, but, but, well, he's younger than me, though. But, but Mayor, though, so you mean to tell me we couldn't find anyone with the requirements, more of the requirements that were listed in the, in the listing, in the advertisement of it?
I, I think he is. He meets all of the requirements in listing. I just showed that he did. He literally meets every area. If, if someone, when you say we find, the division heads are there to serve the administration, that's the vision. No one possesses that vision as much as him. He worked on Spark. He built the program. He built the slide decks, all of the things that we've done, this guy's been a part of my whole life as mayor. I don't know anyone more qualified, smarter, or better to serve in this role right now than him. I am thankful that he's willing to do it.
This is a mayoral appointment. This is not a job application for us. I mean, I think we're very lucky to have a young mayor.
I agree with you that we were lucky to have a mayor.
So the, so the planning division was run in the previous, so there was an interim there for way longer than, than is allowed by law for, forever.
Why couldn't, what, what was the problem there?
Well, that, you'd have to ask the previous administration. I don't know why they do that. I like to have a division head who's responsible within the time limits. You're supposed to have that, but there has been plenty of people, I, I can't think of the last time the planning director was a person degreed in urban planning, if we've ever had that. We've had some engineers, we've had some other people. We go back to Darryl Wade, I'm not sure what that degree was, but I don't think it was that. No.
I have a question. Speaking on, since you've been back in Alexandria, it seems like most of the work you've done as a city attorney has been with the planning division. And I mean, can you speak on that a little bit? Because it seems like you've been an integral part already in that division, working closely.
Thank you. I mean, I couldn't know the exact breakdown, but it's probably been about 50%, I mean, at least 50%.
Right.
A lot, I would say in community development in particular, with all those HUD regulations and the demolitions that you guys see, that's, takes a lot, I mean, that, that takes a lot of guidance. Also, we've got the, you know, the hearing bureau ordinance that's coming up that fits squarely in to the planning department. And I think I, and I, and I can't speak for everyone over there, but I really believe I have their trust as well. I mean, this is.
We did, we did talk to them. This is who they want to lead, and that's a good thing. And he also stands before you on the guest house and all the different things. Daniel's been integral in, in all of these things.
I, I agree with you, man. He's, he's very talented. I like talking to him, but every time I've dealt with him, it's in a legal capacity.
It's probably usually in a legal capacity to do with planning, because you've been talking to about how those kinds of things are all part of planning.
Well, it's a big responsibility, and I appreciate your consideration and care, but I would ask you, please, confirm me for this.
Madam President, in response to Mr. Fowler's comment about this is a mayor's appointment, and in response to the mayor's appointment, seeing like in Washington, that a cabinet position, we can look at our president gave us, John, gave us Kennedy for transport, for health and hospitalization, which seems now, just let me finish, please, that seems now to be very hard fought, and the people that voted for it really hate that they done. Again, Mr. Smith, I have nothing against you personally. Again, your accolades of college education is by far very esteemed. My concern, going into the planning department and speaking with people who apply for permits all over the city, I've talked with, there is such a bottleneck and a hardcore, you're looking at the mayor, but I'm talking to you. There's been a hardcore problem with planning. I'm just wishing that, now, Mr. Dickie was there, who's no longer there for whatever reason. Dolores Brewer was there, she left when the transition left, but we need someone that's going to go in, going to be able to work well with all genres of the people, the committee, the, of the city, citizens, all aspects of permitting. And let me just, I'm not going to put their business out. One group tried to build something here, they got so frustrated with planning, they moved to Pineville.
Wow.
So I'm just saying, sir, we're trying to grow the city. Again, your education says that you understand A to Z, but we want to make sure that you're going to do what you know that is best for the citizens of Alexandria. This is my concern. I don't want to devote in anybody and six months later come back to haunt me. So I wish you the best. I'm only one vote on this council of seven.
Do we need more time?
I have given you, I have given you my concerns that according to the paper that I printed from the city website, your qualifications are not there for as training, I mean, for as doing what you need to be done as. Now, the mayor could sit over and say, you're the best, he's whatever. I don't know how many people apply for this position, but it's something that the citizens need to be satisfied with, with the movement of this administration moving forward, along with this council moving forward, to put people in prospect, in prospective position to make this city be the city that it needs to be, because we're losing people to ball, woodwork, everywhere, moving out of the city because of permitting problem. So I'm just saying, sir, if you get this position, work well with the citizens, and I thank you for your time.
So, let me ask this question. Mr. Smith, say you get, well, maybe it'd be administration question. So Mr. Smith gets the job, the council member seeing that he's not doing what we expect him to do. So how do we, how does that, how do you play that out?
We don't deal with that. He's up there. He's the mayor. He's the mayor.
But Madam President, that's, that's, that's the case anytime. But there's just not been any division heads that I've put forward where that's come up in the time I've been mayor. So that's not a thing I've ever experienced, but I can say this, the guy that I know I want to experience with, it, it with is standing right there. That guy, you're not going to experience it with. And those of you, and I think all of you, have talked to Daniel and know his heart, his mind, his devotion to task, and certainly his love for all people in the city. And especially where there are challenges, that's all he's ever worked on in building Spark. That's what this guy, since we keep calling him a kid and he's not, this kid is, that's what this kid cares about.
Well, I never.
Exactly that. And, and so if you said, to answer your question more directly, he's not making it, I doubt you'll be, be and feeling like it, because I will not, I can't have someone not do well in planning. But the team that is assembled there, and with their trust in him and what I know his intellect and my, and abilities will do, we won't have that. But if you were to come to me with that, that would certainly be something I'd consider. It's just division heads are not applicants, like we keep hearing. We put out a net because we want to hear from people to see that interest, or they're architects who are leaving a job, or they're, that's an interesting thing, but typically your division heads, every mayor, not just John Roy, any mayor, that's someone they go out and seek. It's not like a civil service applicant. I just do belt and suspenders because it's my style. I put out a net just to see interest. But if someone I know has the capability, again, we're talking about unclassified only, then I will go to that person and say that. Most mayors don't put out an application list for unclassified staff. They just appoint them. So the fact that I happen to do that wider net isn't a punishment on Daniel, it's just a choice I make to see and scale interest in the community.
Well, I, I believe Daniel can do the job.
Thank you, council.
I've spoke with Daniel on many occasions. To me, it's like a student, let's say my daughter graduated from college, majored in psychology, but working in education. A lot of people are sitting out here right now that may have a degree in something else, but not working in their majors. So that's how I look at it. And then if you have a person that has already worked in planning, they still have to learn from the coworkers that they're working with.
His major is Asian studies.
Public affairs is his major. That's the requirement for the degree.
So.
He's got a master's.
That's how I look at it, Daniel.
I appreciate that. Can I make a motion that we table this matter?
No, no, let's go. Let's vote on it.
All right, let's vote on it.
Question.
We have a conference question, of course, to make.
We have a motion by Mr. Vilar and a second by Mr. Fowler. Mr. Vilar?
Yes.
Mr. Labor Dan?
I'm staying.
Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Belton?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
No.
No, this is not.
This is not.
Person, personally.
This is not.
I'm sorry.
I don't see what's going on.
Sir, sir.
Everybody been out on this. We can't, the whole city out on this. I'm sorry. You're not, you're not, yes, just one day and we're staying in the past.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Number 11. A resolution-
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
A resolution authorizing advertisement for bids for playground improvements project.
Need a motion. Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilmember Lord. Public comments?
Ms. Bell?
A resolution authorizing an advertisement for bids for playground improvement project. There's a playground in District Two, HDQ, Horseshoe Drive, Deerfield, Quail Ridge subdivision. It's a very small park. I noticed that the six parks that are on the list are Helen Black Park, Charles Smith, Frank O'Hara, Bringhurst City Park, Cheetum Park, Deborah Bowman Park, and they all have the OPC estimate. Even though HDQ, District Two, Mr. Johnson's district, um, it's a smaller park, it has a playground, kids still go there, will the smaller parks, and I know you probably can't answer this, but I'm asking the question, will the smaller parks will have a chance to have their equipment improved, because we still have little children go there? Oh, yes. People walk the park, and so, I don't know what phase this is with the Reignite project, but these six parks, to me, are the larger parks, so the smaller parks should not be getting left behind.
And, and you, thank you for that, you're, you're 100% right. When, when we made that decision last year, dividing up to six parks, I got feedback from Deerfield, because I hang, that's one of my places I go off every, pretty much every day, I walk back there, and I talk to the president, and we got a plan to get some of that money, that money that would dip it out, I asked for $100,000 just for that park, because I know, noticed that the, uh, the gravel was pretty much gone.
Yes.
And they did a good job on trimming the trees back, so I'm aware, aware of that one, and, uh, the one in, uh, Martin Park, too. So, I have spoken up for that, and we will get money for those two, too.
Okay, because I, I wanted to, I, I walk that park sometimes myself.
Okay.
And, like I said, little kids still go there and play on the equipment, so I don't want HDQ to be left behind while you guys are looking at these bigger parks.
Thank you.
We actually supposed to, um, maintain all the parks, and this is just, yeah, phase one, and we supposed to do all the parks, Ms. Bell. I was excited to see it on the agenda, because it's been, I've been elected four years, and it's been fi, four years without equipment in our parks, um, and just to see it on the agenda, um, was good enough for me and myself, I will stay on this as well as I has been, asking about the playground equipment in the park. Okay, because I see that Bringhurst has the highest estimate than all the rest of them. Like I said, um, don't forget about the smaller parks.
Thank you.
We will not, Ms. Bell.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bell.
Discussion, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed, motion carried.
J, ordinances for final adoption subject to public hearing. Number 12, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the LOBI submitted for wire and cable.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilman Johnson. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed, motion carried.
Number 13, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the lowest proposed receipt from Hydra Max USA LLC for bail exercise and program services.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lord, second by Councilman Fowler. Public comments, discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carried.
Number 14, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a corporate endeavor agreement with the Office of State Fire Marshal's Fire and Emergency Training Academy to support fire and emergency training programs at Alexandria Fire Department facilities.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fowler, second by Councilwoman Felter. Public comments, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
My name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White Jr. I live at 3638 10th Street in Alexandria, Louisiana, 71302. My phone number's area code 3184466934. Been a resident here for 64 years, and I'm happy that the State Fire Marshal and the Alexandria Fire Department will be working together with that. I hope the council will give us an update on the greenhouse, guest house, I mean, the guest house situation.
This doesn't have anything to do with the guest house.
I know, but it would be good if we had an update on that, because, like I said, I wish we'd get the National Guard in there to clean up all of that. That would be a good two-week tour duty for the National Guard to do, then the city wouldn't have the painting.
And you know something, it's something that you speak about that, Mr. White, because I was talking to, um, Sheriff Mark Woods-
Okay.
And he had actually said something to that effect.
He'd be training for those jobs.
So, um, we'll look into that.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed, motion carried. Means adjourned.
Oh, hold up, hold up, we have, wait a minute. Cleo Fields, Legislative Bay.
I'm sorry. We have, um, a special guest with us, and she's representing Mr. Cleo Fields, and-
Come to the podium, please, ma'am.
Excuse us for a second. Good evening, everyone. My name is Livonia Malvo, and thank you, I know you guys have had a very engageful and very productive meeting. Bring your greetings on behalf of Congressman Cleo Fields. I am the office coordinator for what we have zoned throughout the district, from the Appaloosa area, but I service the, have the pleasure of serving Rapids' community, and as I do so, I'm learning many of you all. And again, just applaud the work. Just on Friday, we celebrated with the mayor and the airport staff, the announcement of, of, of the United Airlines return, so exciting things that are seemingly promising here. Just today, we've been on the phone, just following up with some of the residents that have safely made it back home from their Jamaica trip that was stranded in Jamaica, and so grateful for the, the coordinations. Many of you all reached out to our office to see what can we do to make sure the residents were returned safely, so, Councilman Lavigne, I appreciate your concern in that, that some of the citizens, even, um, Mr. Hinton over there, bringing it to our attention. So we just want to let you know Congressman Fields is definitely doing what he can to make sure that the government reopens. We, again, as I say, I'm here, um, in your Rapids Parish on the third Wednesday of the month. We've coordinated with the library, the MLK branch, I'm there from 9:00 to 12:00, and then in the afternoon, I transition to Louisiana Christian University to, um, provide mobile office hours. We recognize it might be arduous to travel to Appaloosa just to get some assistance for those who may not be able to do things technologically. But we're present, again, on the third Wednesday of each month in your parish. If you want to schedule a meeting, you can reach out to me, phone number, I have some cards, but our phone number is 337-594-6610. Again, third Wednesdays of the month at the MLK Library from 9:00 to 12:00, and then Louisiana Christian University in the, um, the Grants, uh, Grantsberry Conference Center from 1:00 to 4:00. It's a pleasure, thank you so much. I know you guys realize that the evening is extended, appreciate the opportunity to bring your greetings, and, uh, thank you for your continued engagement, audience, uh, citizens, and for the fine work that the mayor and the administration, the council is doing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. (applause).
We are turning. Good morning, Daniel. I got a question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 11.